Tell us when, Wilton.
Okay.
For July 14, special meeting is now in session. You have the agenda in front of you. Any changes? Okay, then, the agenda is approved, is submitted. First item is review of the police building. And the reason we're in this room is because the microphones aren't available for the next room. Jim?
Counsel, your first study session item tonight is a discussion of expanded police facilities. You all have, and the audience here in the council chambers has a memo that was sent to you last Thursday in your packets that you've had a chance to review. This is another step in a process that really has been going on about maybe a year and a half. Going back, this council's had to deal with a variety of issues with expanded police facilities, making some policy issues on a water utility fund, waiting for Supreme Court ruling for some legal guidance. But the primary topic tonight is a follow-up at your 2009 workshop in January or February. Dr. Cole, when was it?
February.
Thank you, Dr. Cole. Things blur together for me, so I have to do reality checks. Your 2009 workshop in February, the staff presented to you-
It was January 30th.
January 30th.
It was the end of one, the beginning of the other?
The end of one and the beginning of the other.
January 30th.
Okay. I was probably in the twilight zone. Thank you. January 30th.
I don't trust my memory.
The staff presented to you four options, and then there was another option presented by Councilmember Brinkman. At that time, you narrowed down the options to two, and with some other analysis, April 21st council meeting, you directed staff to go back, and now we're down to option one, and so that's why I'm calling it option one. Basically, you asked staff to put together a scope of work that would give you the project components, a process, and an estimated timeline to pursue an approximately 14,222-square-foot building that would be added on to the east of this project. And I think for the people here and the people watching on TV, I'd like to just make a point. Scott Brown, who's been our consultant for many years on this project, I think, and Ned White, who's here tonight, would want me to say that these are approximate numbers. They're just to give you a perspective on what the project might look like. These will not be the exact square footages, and nothing that you hear tonight will be exact. And that's just the nature of the design and build process. But the components that were included in what we'll call option one, which is in addition to the east of the Littleton Center, would include additional evidence storage, an evidence processing lab, a vehicle exam bay, expansion and upgrade of the investigations division, and that's generically called the detective division, some combination of a training room, emergency planning space, and support space, expanded and renovated officer locker rooms, and expanded parking. And the expanded parking would be anticipated to be on the south part of the campus in the lawn area. The idea there is that it would compensate for parking that we might lose on the east side. The very preliminary cost estimate developed by ARC, the city's cost consultant, which is Scott Brown, $5.4 million, and Scott has included the additional parking in that estimate. So, and then we've included a detailed breakdown of the way Scott broke down the space. The issues for you tonight, number one, that the project components, those are the ones that staff had identified for you on January 30th, and that we thought were probably the most critical operational components that needed to be addressed in the police department. Now, Chief Coogan and the commanders are here tonight, and I think if we've talked about space in this building, they will probably tell you that, no, this is not a complete total solution. But these operational components, I think in the staff judgment, are important and are significant, would be a significant improvement to the operational effectiveness of the police department. Also with us here tonight is Ned White with the Intergroup Architects. Ned and his firm moved here maybe 10 years ago, Ned?
Eleven.
Eleven years ago. They, Ned and many of his partners live in the Littleton area, but they had office over on Colorado Boulevard, and 11 years ago moved their offices here in Littleton, just about four blocks up the street from us here on Littleton Boulevard. Ned and his company have not done a project for us, but they've been very generous with their time in helping us just do some scoping and analytical work. And Ned's here tonight to answer any technical questions. The first item that I'd like to address, and this is what, these are the steps, if the council wants to proceed with option one, as the staff has proposed it, would be to retain architectural and engineering services. Now, in retaining professional services, it's quite a bit different from what we call competitive bidding, which is typically what we do for street paving and other kinds of things. We are not required under the city charter to do what's called competitive bidding for professional services. There are two primary methods used to retain professional services. One is called an RFP or RFQ process. That's request for proposals or requests for qualifications. This is typically a process where a number of architectural firms would be contacted, they would be given a scope of services, and then they would submit proposals. Usually, then, there's an interview process. Oftentimes, there's a winnowing down or creating what's called a short list, and then actually there's usually a presentation process before some kind of a committee, and then a selection. At the end of the day, though, there is a contract for services that will be negotiated with some firm. As I pointed out in my memo, and Ned, who's in the business, can certainly comment on this, in my experience of having been involved in a number of projects, the RFP, RFQ process is typically used when you're looking for a wide range of perspectives or ideas, and you're not totally certain about what you want your scope of work to be. And so usually, you're having firms come in that may have different approaches, different ideas about how to take on a particular project. An example I'll give you here in our history was the expansion of the museum, where we had a very sort of conceptual idea of the kinds of things that we wanted in the museum with the galleries and so forth. But we really didn't have any definitive idea of the design, the style, what we wanted it to look like. In that instance, we had an RFP process with staff members, a city council member, and a museum board member interviewing five firms, and then we selected one. A negotiated contract is where you would sit down with one architectural firm and basically negotiate the scope of services. Either way, those contracts would have to come back to council and be approved in a public meeting, and so you would have the ultimate approval authority. As I said, there's, some of it's just the comfort level of what the council wants to do. I mentioned the pros and cons. Probably the biggest con with the RFP process is it adds time to the process, depending on how many proposals you get, how complicated the process is. But we estimate a roughly 60 to 90 day is a typical period of time to go through an RFP, RFQ. It can stretch out if there's more complicating factors. The pro of the negotiating a contract is usually you are going to pick up time, and you'll be working with an architect who's already somewhat familiar with the client, somewhat familiar with the project. So, we can have some discussion there. I have given you a typical, and again, these are just approximate cost estimates of $250,000 to $300,000, and this would be to get us through full design and ready to go to bid.
Did I give my mic correctly? It actually is to get through construction. What else is on there? Is that-
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Construction, about 20% of the-
Ned's not at the microphone, but he's pointing out that that also includes construction administration. I did point out, and this is not something that we've talked about in detail, but with, I wanted to just note for the record that there is a planning process if you proceed with an addition on this campus. Dennis Swain, your community development director, is here tonight, and there are some planning issues because this building is in the TIS, the transit impact zone, so in addition to this building, would have to go through that TIS process, which means that it would have to go through a review process with the planning commission. And so there are other sort of site planning review processes that would, that we would have to go through. Are there any questions at this point in time about professional services and the concept that we've laid out for you?
Do you think this project is going to have a hard time getting through the DRC?
I think it actually goes to planning, doesn't it?
It, it-
The CEO.
It has to go through both.
Both. Okay. So the first decision is whether to do an RFP or to select an architect?
We can either stop there, or I can go on through the budget options, and then we can come back and then open it up, Merits, whatever your preference is.
Questions?
You said to do an RFP would add 60 to 90 days to the process?
Yes, that's our best estimate, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ned, did you want to comment on that? Does that sound reasonable?
And that would get us, in return-
It would get you an architectural firm that had gone through some sort of competitive process, presumably there would have been some different ideas, or perhaps each firm would come in and say, well, here's our track record, here's what we've done. Usually, you're asking for references, you know, did they, did their projects come in on time, were they, did they meet budget? Like I said, in some instances, you're looking for a particular skill, you know, I mean, this is sort of a big example, but the Fintris firm in Denver now has sort of a worldwide reputation in airports. There are other firms that have maybe a niche in school facilities or, you know, some particular niche. But typically, you're looking for who's the team, how did they respond to the client's needs, did they have any, you know, clever or innovative ideas? I mean, that's kind of what you're looking for. So that's usually what you're going to get by going through an RFP process. The other one is, like I said, a negotiated contract, you're still going to have, you know, all the certifications, you're going to have a standard architectural contract, you're going to have a firm that has a track record. In this case, because of staff, we happen to know Intergroup, we're very comfortable with them, but there's, you know, the council kind of has to decide if you have a distinct preference to go one, one direction or the other. Yes, ma'am?
Are we obligated to take the lowest price, or-
No, ma'am.
If we were to, okay.
No, and that's why I gave, again, and for professional service, you're not, we're not even obligated on a competitive bid. If you read the charter, it says the lowest and best. So, and I'm just characterizing the differences with a construction contract. Let's say we've got a paving contractor who comes in and is the lowest bid, but perhaps doesn't have a very good record of meeting timelines, or has had lawsuits, or something else, you know, then in that circumstance, the staff would come to council and have to present to you, here's why we would select somebody else. And professional services, again, it's, you're not required to take the lowest bid, but usually they're going to be somewhere in that 8% to 10% range. And so you're looking, again, for the best combination of, you're really looking for the professional skill level and the fit that you feel like is working with the team, because it's very, a very, has to be a very close working relationship, which we certainly found when we renovated the courthouse and on the museum. You know, there's a lot of interaction between the staff and the, and the professional architectural design team.
Jim?
Well, normally, I really like an RF, request for proposals and request for qualifications. However, I think the scope of work for this project is, is pretty firm. It's a relatively small project. And part of my concern with, with going out for an RFP, in these economic times, I'm not for sure that architectural firms can afford to expend their staff time and, on the chance that they might get a contract. And I think that, that being the case, you may not get the best firms who would respond to an RFP or a Q. And because its scope is so small, I think I'd prefer going with a negotiated contract.
I, I disagree. I think that because of the economic times, I think it would be advantageous for us to put this more in a competitive arena. I also think, I love the idea of having some new and different ideas. Yeah, we're pretty specific on, you know, some of the things that are involved in this, some of the needs, and some of the things this can't change with some of the processing of evidence, things like that. But I think that it would be, for 60 to 90 days, I think it would be worth our while to go out there and get some fresh thinking and some new ideas. I don't, if someone doesn't feel like they have the staff or the time to bid this type of project, then they don't have to submit an RFP.
And I didn't mean to imply that Ned and his group wouldn't have any fresh innovative ideas. I just meant to say-
Well, I didn't mean to imply that either, but I think-
Yeah, just for the record, what I meant to say is that usually your main motivation for going through that process is to do that. So certainly, I'm sure if, if the council decides that, I'm certain Ned and his team are going to feel like they have some very innovative ideas, and they'll certainly be willing to put in a bid, but so-
Well, I'd like to see some different ideas, how different people would handle the same situation, how, here's the footprint, and here's the needs, and how would you handle that? And there may not be that much variance between them, but again, there may be, and there may be some things we didn't think of. It's certainly outside of my level of experience or expertise to, to do that, and so I think having competitive, you know, a couple of choices, I think is, I think it would be, it is my preferred way.
I disagree. I don't want to see us going out for an RFP, because 30 to 60 days seem to end up as six months, and it seems like the 10 years I've been on the city council, we've been talking about the police building, but it's time to get moving on it and get it going right now.
My concern is, it looks like the difference in costs may be 2%. I mean, we have a range of 8% to 10%. My concern is, we've started this process, this has been going on for a while, we've started this process with this council. There's a lot of issues involved with this, including the water fund, the transfer of the money, how much this is going to cost. And 60 to 90 days to get something back, then we have to go through the process of selecting the architect, and then you start with the process of this. So we're probably looking at, as you said, considerably longer than that, and I'd like to get something moving as fast as possible.
I certainly think this council should move on it. We have lost a lot of time. We've got the money now. It's something we said we were going to get done, and it certainly would behoove us to negotiate directly with one firm and just get, get the process going.
All right, somebody want to make a motion on the selecting the architect?
Yeah, I would, if you're, if you're comfortable, I mean, certainly if we can't negotiate a contract that we bring back to you with Intergroup, you know, if we walk in and then we can't come together, we'll come back to you, but that we would bring, we would sit down with Intergroup and try to negotiate a contract if that's what council wants to see, and we would bring that back to you, so you would get a look at the final contract.
I've moved that we have staff negotiate a contract with Intergroup architects to work on the design for a police addition to the building, to this building.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to have the staff negotiate a contract.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Is this, is this design intended to have the capability if we ever want to put another story on it?
Let me talk about it, and then maybe Ned can, can respond. I think that's an option we would look at, because we know that the council has some desire to be able to expand that, and so part of it, depending on what you decide tonight on how far you want to go through the design process, but that's part of what the schematic design and the design development is intended to put together. But I think, Ned, we talked about, you know, distinctly looking at the ability to add another story onto this addition.
And at what point would it be appropriate to ask about making this super energy efficient?
Ned, why don't you come up to the, to the microphone and respond to Dr. Cole's questions? And put, just for the record, just-
Ned White, 2000 West Littleton Boulevard, Littleton, Colorado. That's something we actually, it's, it talked with Jim, Scott, and the police officers about. It's something that all of our projects now we're considering. And because of the age of this facility, obviously, there's a lot of issues that, you know, we're not going to be able to solve. But certainly, anything we do new is the addition, and any remodeling we do inside the existing building, we're going to do everything we can to make it as energy efficient and cost effective as possible, because it's always a trade-off between-
Right.
-first cost and payback. But definitely, the new building would be a much higher performing energy, or much higher performance building, lower energy use than the building you have right now.
And might it even consider a green roof or something?
You know, a green roof is certainly an option we'd look at. One of the complications just gets to be is whether or not we design for a third story. When we design for a third story, we basically go with a flat roof structure, which then forces me to create drainage through other methods rather than the structure itself. It's not, it would not preclude a green roof. But again, the cost of the green roof versus, say, other energy measures, the green roof may not be our best way to spend the money.
Okay, I just, I just needed to ask that piece.
Sure.
And the, the numbers that are allocated for the square footage, just for the record, in case somebody hasn't followed previous discussions, where do the space numbers come for the different functions?
Most of these, and I think Scott had indicated that in a previous meeting with you, but the, and I'm looking here on page one of, well, of the matrix, those first spaces, the evidence with high bay, the ID lab, the vehicle exam, the invest office, those are based on the original need study compiled by McLaren and Associates.
Okay.
Now, we have at council's direction added, you know, the training room, and those facilities came up a little later, but the others are pretty much tied to that basic need study that was conducted by Mr. McLaren when he did the overall need study for the department.
I just wanted to get that out-
Yes, ma'am.
-for the record in this meeting.
It's tied back to that original study.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ned.
Welcome. The next issue is schedule.
Sir, you have, you have a vote, you have a motion on the table for-
Oh, yes, I do.
To negotiate, to, for the staff to go and negotiate a contract with the Intergroup firm.
Any further discussion?
How many votes we need on that? Just a majority.
Just a majority. Counsel ready to vote?
The vote is five in favor with Councilwoman Brinkman voting no, the motion passes.
Okay. Now, schedule.
Let's talk about then the schedule and your budget options, and as I pointed out in my memo, I tried to be, in previous discussions, some council members have expressed a lot of worry and concern about the commitment of these, these water funds, looking at the very, very serious recession that we, that we're dealing with, and how long that might go, and what kinds of consequences that might have for the city down the road. So in talking with Ned and Scott, I laid out a really kind of a process that gives council a number of options. You could, we could either bring a full A and E project back to you, as Ned talked about, with the whole package, starting from schematic design through bidding and negotiation, and even on to contract administration. However, knowing that some council members are very concerned about the economic climate, another option would be to contract for these services in phases. And so what we've laid out for you is, as we've described for you before, schematic design, design development, construction documents, and bidding and negotiation. Each of these, and I've given you a timeframe there, and what it would do is that you could, if the council wanted to proceed in a very cautious manner, we could put the firm under contract for schematic design, take a pause, come back. As I think we've talked to you before, things get clarified as you go up, you know, go through the process. Schematic design will clarify more how the space will operate, what the actual space allocations will be, all those kinds of things. And then the cost predictions typically get more accurate and more, they get more confident as you go through. So that would be another option. For example, if we went through schematic design, it takes about 12 to 13 weeks, we would be back here then in, say, September, and at that time, you will have looked at the 2010 budget. You'll have a better sense of what's going on. So it follows on through to bidding and negotiation, so- negotiations. So, what I tried to outline for you here, and again, looking at the big picture, you don't, this council or a future council doesn't have to make the major commitment of that water fund money until you actually award a bid. I mean, obviously, that's where the significant money gets committed. You will be moving into more design money as you move through here. As you can see, by the time you get to construction documents, estimated at between $100 and $120,000, you're starting to spend fairly significant design money, but you've not let a bid for a four or $5 million project. The only other, the only drawback to that is we've pointed out that if we stop at each phase, then there's a little time extension because we'll come back to council and, you know, discuss that. So, Ned, again, did you want to talk about the phasing or any of the design process?
Well, I think, you know, what I might suggest, Jim, in a scenario like this, is much like Jim's outlined, that we would give you a full proposal for the entire package, but then break it into the five phases, the fifth phase being during construction. But understand that we're only approved phase by phase as we go so that you have the total budget in place at the front end, but then you could just approve each phase individually if you want to do it that way. So, I mean, I think it's the best of both worlds because you have the total budget in hand, but then you really control when we go out and do each phase.
Well, when you look at the layout that's here for schematic design and design development, and both of those costs, if you add them together, are estimated to be anywhere from $75,000 to $90,000. And it seems like that, that's not going to break the bank, frankly. And having gone forth with doing those two phases to begin with seems like would save us a little bit of time. You don't really start getting into some serious spending of money until you get to the construction documents that are done. So, if we went the direction of the first two phases, schematic design and design development, to go up to, say, $100,000, can we cover that, Jim, out of our budget now in some manner without having to dip into the water fund at this time?
Well, I'd have to go scratching for it. The most readily accessible money that we have is the contingency fund, which is right at $100,000. So, if the council, if you were willing to commit your 2009 contingency, then certainly we could, and we could get the firm under contract if that was council's intent for those first two phases.
Let me ask a question then. If we didn't use all of our contingency, then that just stays in the general fund?
Yes, ma'am.
If we happen to need all of that, then we would have to get some money and then needed more, we would have to take it out of something else?
Yes, ma'am, or amend the budget. I mean, we have fund reserves, you know, in our fund balance. So, we could go get more money if, for some reason, let's say, we committed that and then some big unexpected thing came along. We could certainly go back and amend the budget, assuming that at this point in time, you're not, your preference would not be to have the discussion about moving money out of the water fund. But even if we got down the road, we could still come back and amend the budget and resupplement, say, the contingency fund if something else came along.
But we could move enough for the first two parts or one part, whatever. We could move part of that out of the water fund to address that.
Yes, ma'am, if that was your preference or desire.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. So, certainly, that's an option. I mean, as we talked about before, you know, moving the money, what staff recommended was moving the money into the capital projects fund and then it would be budgeted and then, of course, dispersed from a line item. But yes, you would have the option of moving some or part of that money from the water fund. You would have the option of committing some of your contingency fund. You could have the option of committing all of your contingency fund and then coming back. You could amend your budget if something else came up and we had to replenish the contingency fund. So, I think you've got a lot of options. It's really your comfort level of where you'd like to...
But it gets a little messier, a little more complicated. If we used contingency fund for part of this, when we've, and then we cannot very easily, I mean, I know we can move to do it, but we cannot very easily move money from the water fund to the general fund. It's cleaner and fits what we've previously discussed to move, move that money into special projects or down the line to use part of it to pay the debts on, on capital projects.
That's what we had recommended. And again, that's mainly because it takes, you know, it takes ordinances to move the money. It takes, it takes ordinance amendments to appropriate the money, if you remember. So, it's a little more paperwork. We have to jump through a little bit more process is kind of, I think, the main issue at stake because there'd have to be ordinances. So, you've got to have public hearings and it just takes a little bit more process to do that.
To move the money out of the water fund, we have to have a public hearing?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so. It does have to be done by your...
Yeah, ordinance first and second. Reunion is what we did last time.
Yeah, we did.
I believe it has to be done by ordinance, yes, ma'am.
Jim?
Well, it really seems to me that if we took the first two phases out of our current contingency fund and we decided to continue down this path and getting ready to go to construction documents and say it's going to be another $150,000. We don't have it in contingency, but we do have other funds that we could tap by amending our budget. And my preference is to leave the water fund alone right now.
And I, I think that's, we can accommodate from a process. For example, the contingency fund, and I'm just giving you examples here, is done by resolution. So, in one night, if there's five of you who say we want to move this contingency fund, then that's one transaction. If you got down the road and you needed other money, you needed to amend the budget, we've got the flexibility to do that. It just takes a little bit more process to do it. It would, like you said, Mr. Taylor, we'd have to have a budget amendment, amend, an ordinance to amend the budget to replenish it or appropriate whatever funds we were at the, at the threshold of committing to.
And don't we have the ability to, I don't know how to describe unless it's a contract with ourselves, so that anytime we take money out this year of our 2009 budget, when you get to the end of the year and we make a decision to then tap into the water fund, that you can replenish all the funds we have expended up to that point on this project out of the water funds?
I'm looking back here because I didn't want to come in tomorrow and get a talking to from, I'm looking back for people on TV, I'm looking at Doug Farm and the city's finance director, and he has a big, you know, sort of a Catholic nun type ruler in his office that if I get out of hand, I get, he takes me in there and I get a whack. But he's nodding yes, that what you just said is correct. We could do an end of year adjustment and settle up accounts. So, there's, there's not a permanent obstacle to doing any of this. It's just a matter of your comfort level and then what kinds of ordinances or administrative processes we need to go through to just accommodate you. And Doug, did I say that right?
Very good.
Okay, he says I'm okay. We've got four steps here from schematic design to bidding and negotiations.
Yes.
Could you give us an estimate of your confidence level in the price?
Great question, Mayor.
At each one of these steps?
Right now, we're carrying a 15% contingency in the budget. I think at schematic design, at the end of schematic design, that contingency could probably drop by 2% or 3%, another would say about 12%. At the, at the end of design development, it would probably drop to about a 7% or 8% contingency, maybe as low as 5%.
So, to put it another way, would you say that we're 80% confident or 90% confident of the estimated price at the end of schematic design?
Probably 85% at the end of schematic and probably 90% to 95% at the end of design development.
Okay.
The only variable there, Mayor, would be market fluctuations. And we're in somewhat, well, we're actually in fairly good territory right now from the city's standpoint. But how that will look in eight to 10 months is anybody's guess right now. Based on everything we're seeing in the market, it probably is not going to improve, i.e. the prices will not come up. So, it's probably still going to be a very favorable market for the city.
Okay. Would you also say, tell us what it is that we will have, what we will know at the end of schematic design? I mean, there are some questions about how much space is allocated to each area. What do we get when we get to schematic design?
At the end of schematic design, you're going to have a fairly complete set of floor plans, exterior elevations, wall sections. So, we'll know the layout that we're proposing. We'll know the interior changes that we're proposing to the existing structure. We'll know basically the type of exterior construction, the design of the exterior of the building. So, we'll have a fairly complete schematic package, but it will define sort of the big picture of everything that's going on. So, it'll be a pretty good package. And at that point, when we estimate, we'll have a much better handle on it. Right now, we're estimating on square footage basis. That way, we'll be estimating more on true quantity type things like millennial feet of walls, number of doors, things like that. So, that's, that's why the estimates get much better.
So, we'll also know how much space we're actually allocating specifically to evidence storage and things like that?
Absolutely.
Or to put it another way, by the time we get done with schematic design, we'll have a pretty good idea of what function we're going to get in the building.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Design development just is an extension that's just going to take it to a more finite level of detail. And so, that's why the price gets more finite.
And that's three months?
Yes.
So, we're looking at August, September, October, roughly October timeframe?
Three months to the end of schematic is basically what we estimated.
Okay. Well, council one alternative here is go through schematic design, which takes us somewhere in October timeframe. By that time, we will have gone through the 2010 budget. We should have a pretty good idea of what exactly this expansion is going to accomplish function wise by the layout. I'm hoping that would give this council enough information with an 85% or so confidence level in the price to decide whether they want to continue with the project or not. There may be some economic uncertainties of what's happening with the economy that would cause us to delay a decision, but it seems to me like, from the way you're describing, by the October timeframe, we might be in a position to be able to decide to go or no go, which I think is sort of tied to deciding to transfer the money from the water fund or not. That means that we'd be spending $35,000 to $45,000 to get to a decision point. At that point, the council likes what they see. We could basically pull the trigger on going forward with this, transfer the money from the water fund, and I'm just suggesting possibilities here, and basically going ahead with the project.
Let me ask another question. When, about 15 minutes ago, I think, you said you could present us with the whole cost of these four things and then we could take them one at a time, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, got that right. So, suppose we were kind of pokey in this, in the phases, you know, maybe the economy is doing not very good things and we slow down this process. How, how long is your, this whole cost thing good for?
You know, that's a negotiable item, doctor. Typically, in most of our contracts, it's a year from the day to the, the day to the signing of the contract. In this particular case, because of the nature of the project, we'd probably do it two years. So, and at that point, it's largely driven by our cost of doing business. And if it stays like it is now, there'd be no change in the contract. So, it's a little hard to predict, but that's something that we could negotiate in the contract terms is try to get a comfort level of how long that, those prices are good for. You know, we certainly want to be fair to the city, but on the other side, we have to protect ourselves if, if all of a sudden inflation were to catch up.
Yeah, no, well, it sounded pretty absolute the way you said it to begin with, and I found that a little hard to deal with, so...
We do our contracts pretty absolute and, but we do put a timeframe on them. And like I said, it's typically a year.
No, so that's why I wanted to clarify.
In this case, it would probably, I'd suggest it's probably going to be a two-year window, just because of the timeframe we've already outlined. Because if we did go through all these steps, we're talking about roughly a 10 to 11 month design and bidding process, and then the construction is going to be about the same amount of time afterwards. So, we've got about a two-year window we're going to be obligated to if we just continue to move through it step by step.
Should we be looking summer or fall of 2011 before anybody was occupying space?
Yes, ma'am.
That's about right.
Okay.
That's, that's the reality of designing and building a building.
Lower than us.
Hard to believe.
Hard to believe.
Jim?
Well, Doug, I can certainly agree with your analysis of just doing phase ones. I kind of wanted to do phase one and two, but I think the important thing is to get this, get this moving, get this off the dime and start moving forward. And schematic design would certainly help satisfy my desires.
Well, I'm, I'm fine negotiating the whole contract. What I'm suggesting is, is that at the end of schematic design, which hopefully is in October, that we have another presentation and we, and we plan on having a decision point on whether we want to continue or not. We may decide that we don't have enough information. We may decide that the economy is too uncertain to make a decision at that point. We may decide that we want to continue the design without knowing whether we're going to continue the building. But I'm, I'm hoping, I'm hoping that now in July, by October, we will have enough information that we will be able to make a decision on whether we think this project is something that we want to go forward with enough to be able to transfer the money to finish funding the rest of this and the, the rest of the project. And to me, that's sort of a going together type thing of linking the water fund, transfer money to the actual project of what we're doing.
And the flip side about the economy is you might get some really good bids. I was at the regional transportation district meeting this morning and money is beginning to flow back off the era funds because the bids are coming in much slower than what the estimates were. And we're going to be reprogramming over $4 million through Dr. Cog on the stimulus funds.
This is, this is a fabulous time to build, but the risk factor of, of when the economy comes back, how much reserves we'll spend to keep the city running until the economy comes back is something I don't think any of us know. So, part of this will be how much this project costs with how much we have in reserves with everything else, based on the 2010 budget and what's left in the water fund. But hopefully, like I've said, by October, we'll have enough information that, I'm hoping the council can go forward. I don't know if that's the case, but why not be optimistic?
Are you looking for a motion?
Well, I guess the next decision is what kind of contract, is that what you're looking for? If you, that would be to direct the staff to negotiate a contract with Intergroup and then bring it back to you for approval.
The whole contract or phase one?
Well, I think as Mr. White said, what we would probably do is negotiate a complete contract and then come back with, ask for funding authorization for specifically the schematic design.
Okay, so we're not funding that piece tonight, we're funding the contract?
No, ma'am. You're, all you're doing tonight is giving us direction to go sit down with Mr. White and his firm and negotiate a contract.
So moved.
All right, let's, if we... What if we were to give instructions to negotiate a contract for the full services, however, at the end of schematic design, we would have a clause that would allow us to basically stop the contract? Well, that, and that'll be in, as Mr. White said, that'll be in the contract. You know, typical, the typical standard architectural contract gives the client usually that discretion. So, what we would do is negotiate a full services contract. We'd need to come back to you and get some funding authorization for, let's say, up to $45,000 or $50,000. So, we'd come back to you in a council meeting to approve the contract. You could look at the contract, but it, I can assure you, it would have language in there that says that the, us, the client, would have the discretion to discontinue the project at schematic design or...
or there would be some language in there like that. And then we'd bring that probably back to you. And the same night, we'd ask for, I'm thinking about a contingency transfer for, let's say, $45,000 or $50,000. Then we would have the funding authorization and the approved contract to engage them and begin the schematic design process.
So if, if we were to go this direction, then at the end of schematic design, if we were to decide that the economy was so bad that, that we didn't think we could continue the project within the next two years, or we didn't like what we saw, or we had...
Yeah, a lot of things could happen. You could look at it and say, wait a minute, that's not what we thought you were describing to us. We don't want to do this at all. Then it goes on the shelf with everything else and we go some other direction.
Typically, all architectural contracts, all of ours have also an out at any time. With written notice, like five days' notice, you can basically suspend the contract even halfway through schematic if something were to happen catastrophically and the city decided to stop the process. So it's not, once you commit to schematics, we haven't spent all that money. You, you have the, you know, at any given point to stop.
And, and usually, it's just a matter of fairness. If they've already, you know, put in so many hours, you would think they would be compensated for that and then there would be, but there's always, as Ed, Ned said, an escape clause that if, when you see the 2010 budget, if you all just sort of fall out of your chairs and say, oh, my Lord, then, you know, this thing would just stop.
Yeah, you want me to try this as a motion?
I think you made a motion.
Yeah, well, and I, mine might have been redundant because we already had the one motion and I thought I was refining something, but maybe, maybe I didn't.
I must have missed yours.
That's good.
Well, you did, you did make, you did make a motion to enter negotiations with Mr. White and his firm. So I guess the refinement would be to...
Yeah, so I, I thought we were fine-tuning the...
Second. Pardon?
There wasn't a second.
I didn't even know there was a first, so. How about, okay, so...
May...
We were just going to tell you what your first motion was.
The first one that we passed?
Yeah.
Okay, that was, that was to enter negotiations into a contract specifically with Intergroup?
That's correct.
Okay. I think what we're trying to decide now is what the timing is and the schedule and what the scope of that contract is. So to try and make that clear, I'm going to move that the contract be negotiated such that Intergroup come back after schematic design, that you negotiate the scope of the contract be for all four phases, and that we have an escape clause at the end of schematic design.
I can't see how that's helping us, Doug. I really, truly don't see how that's helping us.
Okay.
There's no second.
I think, I think what we've given direction to staff is to negotiate a contract. They'll come back with, I think, just exactly what you said.
Okay. Then that makes things simpler.
That just makes us look good, Jim. See, that means we followed your directions to the T.
So have we exhausted this now?
I, we understand completely, absolutely, what your prerogatives are. So I, I have no qualms about what council expects us to do.
But about the other piece, though. So we are directing him, when they bring back the negotiated contract, to bring back at the same time a resolution to, to pay for that first phase out of contingency fund?
Contingency, yes.
So we, we do need a motion or not for that?
It's up, it's at your preference if you want a motion, I certainly...
Do that tonight, we can do that when the...
That's fine, yes, ma'am.
We can do that when the contract comes.
Yes, ma'am. We don't need a motion.
We can just do that on the spot?
Well, the resolution we need to have at a public meeting.
You don't, you don't need a motion to direct us to do that, we'll go ahead and do it.
Good. Any more questions? Thank you all for coming.
Okay.
We're four minutes ahead of schedule.
Jim, while they're leaving, can I ask what timeline you see bringing back a contract to us?
I, I would think, Ned, hang on a second, just a second. I would think maybe a couple of weeks on a, maybe three, yeah, two to three weeks and, because we'll have to...
But two weeks is another study, well, two weeks is, is a district meeting, right? So...
The August, maybe, maybe by August 4th, I don't know. We'd have to kind of see if we run into any hiccups. But we'd certainly expect to be back to you in early August sometime.
Okay, which means then we wouldn't get that first phase until late October, early November? If we're looking 12 to 13 months?
It kind of depends on whether we're on the fast, these are conservative, but it's hard to say. Again, it depends on what kind of complexities they run into. When they start looking at the east side there, they may want to say, well, hey, how about if we wrap the building a little bit around to the north?
Okay, I just wanted to stay...
But yes, ma'am, it, these are, like I said, these are not absolutes. So it could come to you if, if the design process flowed a little smoother, it might come a little quicker. If we run into complications, we are kind of nudging right up next to the floodplain there of the gulch. You know, the police department needs to be involved in how things would interact with the existing space. But I think that Octoberish, late Octoberish, early November timeframe is, is a reasonable estimate.
That's all right, because we, you first said late September, but when we count it up, it's actually early October. But now we're moving it...
Yes, ma'am.
Now it's late October.
We're moving it out further.
I, I've got to say, I mean, everybody appeared to just said they wanted it to move faster, turn down doing the 60 to 90-day RFP. And I mean, if it's difference between two to three weeks, I mean, if everybody's so busy and has so much stuff going on that we have to keep moving this out, then that's one thing. But it seems to me that we've, there's not so-so much going on right now that this, this has been sitting... We've been trying to get a solution to the police facility, well, for 10 years. And, you know, if we're getting, seems closer than we've been in a long time, I'd like to see us keep moving, keep this on a priority track and keep this moving, you know, a week here, a week there, a week there. We just lost a month in a two-minute conversation, so...
I think what Debbie is saying is, could we shoot for the 21st?
You know, Mayor, we can shoot for that, but let me, let me just make an important point here.
Okay.
And that's having been involved in many capital projects, and particularly when there's design involved, and I'll just say, in the last probably 10 years, I've been involved in probably $15 million worth of projects here right in this city. And just to say, it's just not realistic to absolutely give you a fast and hard date and say it will be done by that date. There is nobody who has run a capital project with any experience that's willing to do that. Will we go as fast as possible? Yes, ma'am, and we know how to ramp up. But until, this is the reality check. This is where we go from sitting in rooms like this and sort of guessing and kind of saying, well, it could go over here and, yeah, this could work and it'll be easy to go out that. This is where somebody's going to sit down and get the geotechnical engineers and look at the drain engine, they're going to actually start drawing up space and looking at wall space. And sometimes you just run into things, whoops, we didn't think about that. So we, we can accelerate this, but...
That's all true, I think we're just talking the contract, though.
I'm sorry.
I mean, we, we may get into the design and there may be all sorts of things that happen, I'm just...
And Jim, I appreciate you managing our expectations on this, but, and I'm not looking for an exact date. I'm just looking for us to continue to keep this on a progressive move.
Because, because once we do the contract, we just basically throw it over the wall and then...
All right. I'm, well, I didn't mean to imply, I guess, maybe it's just the scar tissue on my back from previous projects of saying it will be done by this time. And then my experience is that it's not always done. But there's no, I don't have any problem committing to you that this is front burner, so...
Okay, and if you can get the contract to us by the 21st and the resolution, that would be great. If you can't, we understand, okay?
Yes, sir.
All righty. Thank you very much.
Coffee.
I think we need to take a five-minute break. Okay, we're back. Next agenda item is policies on boards and commissions to fill mid-year vacancies. And it looks like we want to cover six items. Sending out notifications when we discuss changes to the code necessary so that each board can determine when they elect their own chairman. We need to talk about what we're going to do on attendance issues for boards. How long the applications are good for or when do they become stale? And I believe that's kind of the crux of what Jim and John, or at least Jim had issues with the other, other night. That sort of ties into mid-year appointments. What do you do when you have a vacancy partway through the year? And lastly, what is BX's job? So let's do the easy one first. Notification, Peggy?
Yes, so can I explain why this is coming up?
Sure.
So someone on one of the boards and commissions emailed me after seeing the agenda and was a little surprised not to, it's not one of my boards and commissions, but a little surprised to see it and thought it'd be a very good idea to send out notice whenever a board or commission, or multiple boards and commissions are being, are a subject of the agenda, so they would have opportunity to, to come, to contact beforehand if they couldn't come, to watch on TV or whatever. And I see that as just an extension of what we do when we discuss an issue related to a department. The department person, a department head usually comes. So I'd like us to have, I moved that we have a policy that would notify department head, board, or commission members whenever their respective groups are going to be involved in an agenda item.
I'm going to second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Peggy and seconded by Jim that we have a policy to notify, a policy to notify boards...
Boards and commissions that they're the subject of an agenda item.
Boards and commissions if they're subject of an agenda item.
That's, that's okay. And I, and I also said the department heads, which we're already doing, but this is global.
Any more discussion on this? Counsel, ready to vote?
Voted six in favor, the motion's approved.
Okay. That was the easy one first. Next one is electing the chairmans of the boards. And apparently, we have something that's currently specified somewhere that says that they're supposed to elect chairmans, what, the first meeting that they have after they're appointed? April. And we have some boards that, for various reasons, would like to choose their chairman at a different time later on. I've heard one specific reason that they'd like to get to know each other a little bit better before they select a chairman. But since we have that in the code, if we want to have that flexibility, we probably ought to update the code to reflect that. So, Jim?
I, I think that the, each of the boards and commissions ought to have that ability to decide when they want to elect their chairman. Traditionally, the Riverfront Authority has done their elections in December, when we have an annual meeting. And normally, that's the only meeting of the year we have anyway, but, but it's our first and last. But there has been at least an occasion when we had to have an emergency meeting during the middle of the term to deal with some bond issues, and we never thought about trying to elect a chairman at that time.
Okay.
So, you know...
All right, so you want to make a motion to direct staff to bring us back an ordinance change? Is that, that's in the ordinances, right, or is it in the policy book?
I think it's just in the handbook that you adopted.
No, it's in, it's in, it's in, it's in code.
It's in the code?
I believe so. I have code with me if you want me to...
Okay, well, whatever it takes, we'll bring it back.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the motion from Jim, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to instruct the staff to bring us back, whatever it is that needs to be changed, so that the boards and commissions can select their chairmans at something other than the first meeting in April. Any further discussion? Counsel, ready to vote?
Voted six in favor, the motion's approved.
Okay, hang on, let me make a note. All right, attendance. We do have an attendance policy. Do you happen to have that memorized, Ms. City Attorney?
Miss two, you can miss two in, before, two unexcused before they are supposed to notify council?
Wait a minute, I got it, I got it.
I've got it.
Three?
Three consecutive or, or two, three consecutive or three in a 12-month period?
Boards, let's see, boards that meet monthly, any member of a board with absences from three consecutive meetings or four absences from meetings during 12 consecutive months shall be referred by the chair to the city council for possible replacement. And then for boards that meet more frequently than monthly, any member of a board with absences from three consecutive meetings or six absences from meetings during 12 consecutive months shall be referred by the chair to the city council for possible replacement.
Okay. So we have a policy and basically, I guess, the issue is the chairs aren't referring them to us?
That's happened, not happened in the past. I, you know, I was mayor before you and John was mayor before them. I don't think John did, and I know I didn't get any references at all.
To absences?
About absences until we got to the, time to appoint.
Appoint and then the, and then it just shows up on the...
Yeah, then it shows up on the attendance roster.
Attendance records. And there generally, the two, the board terms are generally two years at a, at a pop, right?
Three.
Three years at a pop?
Oh, yeah, three.
Okay. So counsel, what do you want to do?
One of the things that I've observed is that I'm not sure that the chairs are really aware of this. And I think that there may be kind of a, well, just an ignorance, for lack of a better word, that, that they have this ability. As a liaison, I have, you know, watched it in my committees and I see what happens when you have some absenteeism and how it affects other members and how it affects the meeting and things like that. And so, you know, I brought concerns back to council about those issues. But I don't think that the chairs, and I think that, that if we do want to empower the chairs to do that, then I think we need to make it very clear to them that, that that's what they need to do. You do?
Either they need to do it, or another suggestion is, is each board and commission has a staff liaison or a staff person on their board and commission, and maybe they notify the council liaison and say, this is where we at with the, with the attendance. If it, you know, every quarter or something, they let it, so it doesn't go for the whole year. And then when you get your council, your boards and commission workbooks and you see that, you know, Mr. Smith has missed six of the 12 meetings, that by the quarter, you're going to know if they're missing, if they've missed two of the three meetings out of the quarter, the staff can let the council liaison know and then council can discuss it.
I think that's a good idea, too, because then you can proactively communicate back with that member and let them know, you, you, here's the absentee policy and you're getting close to it. Are you finding a conflict with meetings on this night or, you know? And sometimes you can resolve some problems there. And sometimes I'm not sure the committee members recognize that there's an absentee policy either. So I, I like Wendy's idea.
How about if we have the staff member, once every six months, send out attendance records to both the chair of the board... records to both the chair of the board and the council? There are some boards that have no liaisons.
They have no liaison, right.
And I think you need to inform the chair. I think the chair needs to know what's going on, because the first question we're probably going to do, or the first thing we're going to do is talk to the chair, if we have an attendance issue with the board anyway. I think they need to get the information at the same time we do. You all all right with that?
I think that's a good plan.
And then what?
Well, what the, what the policy says is that it'll be brought to the council's attention and the council will make a decision. And what we've done in the past is look at what the circumstances are and trying to decide what's appropriate and what's not appropriate, because sometimes there's illness in the family, sometimes there's other circumstances. And I think, I think we still need to take that into consideration. But, but what's missing is the interim notification between the times that we go through the appointments. And I think this will help do that process, so the boards can police themselves and so that we can know what's happening.
I, I believe there are some boards and commissions that operate under an excused absence policy. And I think I'm hearing you say that we take each one of these kind of, based upon the merits of why the absences are there.
Well, I'm not sure that we have a policy of excused absences, but, but the fact that the board thinks that they're excused sort of gives us an indication that, that they've already looked at the absence and they've already come to the determination that they think it's appropriate. But I'm not sure that we could, I'm not sure that I want to, at this point in time, say that we're automatically going to take action, A, if we hit this many absences. I think what we ought to want, I think we just want to be notified, and the boards want to be notified, of what's going on.
Well, that's basically what this says here, too, is it's that you're referred to the city council for possible replacement, but it doesn't say that you're automatically off if you've had some absentee problems. And a couple of my committees do do the excused and the unexcused. And I, I think, I just as soon see that go away. I don't know that, I mean, the point is not whether you're calling in and saying you're not coming, it's about the participation level you have with your committee. And so if there's a problem with that, then that's where, you know, the issue gets bubbled back up to us. But the excused and unexcused, I think that can be a little bit of a record-keeping thing that we could eliminate. It doesn't seem to prove anything or be of any value with my committees, anyway.
And does council want to make any distinction between the regular meetings and the special meetings, or is this any meeting? You know, I'm thinking of Planning Commission, they've done a bunch of, you know, we've done workshops, we've done forums, we've done the open houses, those are all posted as meetings because more than three of them are there. But I'm not sure how many planning commissioners would run into this problem if you included special meetings.
Well, that's, that's why I think that we need to look at whatever the circumstances are for any kind of absence.
So you want them all reported and then look at what they were?
Let's start with that and see what happens unless...
Well, one of the things we do on Fine Arts, because we have the same thing, we have our monthly meetings, and then we have the shows and the this and the that, and there's been a lot of people that have put a lot of time into this conservation stuff. And so they do get marked on attendance for that. And actually, it, it's kind of a, because it's such a working committee, and I think it's pretty much like Planning Commission, too, the primary attendance where you're in a voting situation, those are your meetings. And then if there's an attendance problem there, then when that comes back up to us or whoever has to look at that, then you also have the attendance record of their extracurricular activities within the committee, so you can see their commitment to the committee and make some, make some decisions about that. I think that would work for Planning, too.
So you'd like them separated out when you get your attendance?
Uh huh, I would, I would.
And the real issue, I mean, everybody that we appoint wants to be on a board. They're all volunteering, they're all dedicated to this. I, I think what we're trying to accomplish is just make people aware of what's going on, because if, if somebody all of a sudden says, oh, I didn't realize that I had missed that many, then they'll make an assessment on their own on whether they're contributing to the board, because all these people that were appointed are, are good folks, they're all working for this. I don't think we're going to get into situations where we're having disagreements on, on what the proper course of action to be. I just view this as, as a way of just notifying people of what's going on so that they can sort of be self-aware.
I agree. I think it's important to formalize this process because, and I agree with you, you're saying about that these people are volunteers and we're asking them to give up their, their time with family, et cetera, to do this. But in the same regard, we have to be cognizant of the other people on the committee that sometimes have to bear a double burden when there is absenteeism. It's not true on every committee, but for those that it is affected by, I think it, you know, it just shows a broader scope of fairness if we stay on this.
Okay. Anything else on attendance? Are we all happy with what we think we've decided, which is every six months to send out letters to the, to the boards and the council on attendance records? Okay. Next item is, how long are the applicants good for? When do they go stale? Jim?
Well, let me see if I've got this timeline down. We have applications due to us by the end of January. We interview in the February, March timeframe.
We interview in February and we appoint in March.
We appoint them in March for an April effective date.
Correct.
So at that time, they're already, the applications are already three months old.
Correct.
And I would propose that if a vacancy occurs within 30 days or maybe even six weeks, but certainly not any longer than that, of the time that we make appointments, that we can appoint somebody from our existing list. But I think you've already had a long length of time there. And trying to appoint somebody after the appointments are six months old is bothersome to me. If I really had my druthers, if there's a vacancy after we appoint, I wouldn't do anything because we've appointed people who applied in one position, we appointed them someplace else, and they don't have the opportunity to come back and say, wait a minute, I, guys, I didn't want to do that.
I actually, in theory, agree with both of those, although the downside of that is, I'm, the downside of that is you may be asking people to come back and re-interview every six months if you have the opening. I know that we traditionally periodically struggled with over the years when we have a vacancy on a committee, of how many vacancies there are before we need to appoint. And I think it's dependent on what the committee is and what the circumstances are and how many vacancies there are and things like this. And I think that we normally have hesitated to appoint mid-year because of those issues that you've talked about. Because, I mean, there's a trade-off of, of how long ago the interview was, whether we can actually remember what the contents of the interview, as opposed to how often you're asking people to come back and do this. I think that we right now on two committees are faced with moderately unusual circumstances, and that is the, the chair of the Planning Commission wants to fill the alternate position. And I don't remember having that specific request in the past. And, and I can see no particular reason in not fulfilling that. And then BAC, we've had a number of...
We have one absent, or one opening on BAC, but what happened last year is that we had a number of openings and we didn't fill those. And then you combine that with absenteeism at meetings, and they actually had one meeting, I think, where they didn't have a quorum. And so that...
But that was last year, not this year, right?
Right.
Okay.
But you just don't know what's going to happen.
So at this point in time, they're only down one?
Right.
Julie, I have an observation. The quasi-judicial boards and commissions, I think, are more critical in terms of maintaining number than the others, although certainly the others may be deciding some things, but the quasi-judicial is important. And maybe the learning curve is more challenging for those. So I'm, I'm wondering, for example, in the Planning Commission, maybe we need three alternates, because that gives you essentially, you know, another fill-in, and it's not so likely that three people are going to be absent or leaving or whatever within one year. So, I mean, that's one possibility, but the, the Fine Arts Committee, which is such a physically active, demanding committee physically, maybe you guys need some alternates on that, I don't know. Or maybe that needs to be larger, or...
I mean, the whole alternate idea, quite honestly, isn't, I don't think it's that bad of an idea for all the committees, is while we're there interviewing people, if we have some that we would like to put in a, and they don't need, I think on the Planning Commission, they need to be at all of those meetings, but for some of the other committees, they don't need to attend those meetings. And when there is an opening, we've already selected someone, we call them, we say, there's an opening, you know, you are an alternate on this, if you're still interested, your next meeting day would be this.
What do we have alternates for? Planning Commission, we just added some for HPP, do we have them for liquor?
Yes.
So all the quasi-judicial have alternates?
Yes.
Once again, there's, I don't remember having a whole bunch of issues of, of needing to appoint midterm to boards, maybe I'm just not remembering.
I just don't think we've done a lot of it.
I don't think, I don't think we've done a lot of it, and part of it is because we've had the alternates. I guess I thought BAC was down more than it really is. If they're only down one, then my inclination, because we're in July, is not to appoint to BAC. And, and to be perfectly honest, I was cleaning my office, which I realize is unusual, about three weeks ago, and threw out all of the notes for the boards and commissions, thinking it's been so long, I'll never need these again.
For this year already?
Yes, this year already.
I thought you had things like three...
Although I did find the one from a year ago in my file cabinet.
You threw the wrong one out, huh?
Yeah, I threw the wrong year out. So I don't, and I also threw out my notebook with all of the notes on the interviews. So I couldn't make an appointment because I don't...
I can tell you some of the way you voted when we chose who we did, because I got my book with me, so...
Yeah. So folks, what do you want to do? Do you want to try and appoint somebody for Planning Commission?
I think we need to. I think the commissioner has asked us to do that, and I think the Planning Commission is a, I mean, that's a position that that does take some ramp-up time. I think that they need to, to participate in those meetings. I think BAC at this point, if we don't want to do anything on BAC, but I think we need to have some better plan in place next time when we interview these people as to how it is we're going to handle filling in, because if, for some weird freaky reason, I lose four people on Fine Arts, we're screwed. Fine Arts Committee with the shows we've got coming up and the work we're doing right now, those poor people, we can't, we, that's going, that's asking way above and beyond for these committee members, we just aren't paying them.
Well, if, if we have, I mean, if we have an unusual circumstance, and it seems to go in ways where you have resignations on boards, it's like one jumped ship and three or four of them jumped ship at the same time. If that happens, then we have to deal with it.
Well, we should decide some sort of policy for that so that next year, because it always seems like when we're sitting there doing the interviewing, we're, you know, that's where we can tell these people that, that's where we can make our own considerations on that.
Well, let's, let's handle the Planning Commission first. Jim, do you, do you see somebody on...
Well, frankly, I'm not wanting to appoint anybody to Planning Commission. They've got a seven-member board, they've got two alternates. They move an alternate into a voting position, so they still have seven people voting. For any, if somebody's absent and they move the other alternate in, they still have seven people voting. If there's two people absent, it's still, they've got enough people to function. If there's three people absent, they still have enough people to function. To me, trying to appoint anybody at this time is going to be like falling dominos.
Well, I'm in a position right now where I honestly can't vote for somebody because I don't have my notes, and...
Murray, fine.
Pardon? How about if I go back to Dave and see how crucial this issue is for Planning Commission?
I can tell you, last night, they did make a statement about it, and Pavlos, in particular, indicated that he really wanted to encourage council to appoint someone tonight, and then Dave said that he was concerned about what was going to happen tonight. So I don't know what your take is, Dennis, if they've talked to you about it, but...
And I think it's the ramp-up that you were talking about, that because they're working on the conference of plan, to get somebody up to speed by the time they actually get into the meeting and the public hearings on it, they felt it was better than...
I don't know if you've got multiple people on the board that are looking for that. How about if we re-interview for Planning Commission?
Reopen the applications or re-interview the people who...
Reopen the applications. It's been...
That's the only really fair way to do it, if you're going to do that.
It's been six months since we took...
And whenever I look at the who we've got on planning commission, there's one person that we appointed to a different committee, because I think, in our discussion, as I remember that night, we thought he was a fairly good guy and would do a good job, but we didn't have a space for him on the planning commission, so we put him on another board.
He shows up on your list on the BOA now, Jonathan...
Jonathan Spencer.
Spencer.
Right.
He was appointed to another board.
Yeah, and so opening it up gives him that opportunity to come back and say, "I'd like to be reconsidered again."
Oh, good, then we have a vacancy on another board if he gets...
That's what I said, falling dominos.
Yep. No, I agree that it would probably be best to reopen applications and re-interview.
Well, I'm going to vote against it if we have this as a motion to reopen it up, simply because I, I think that we can survive without doing that.
Well, if, if you're going to vote against it, then does the rest of the council want to just go ahead and appoint somebody tonight?
Well, let me ask a question, those were all videoed, weren't they?
Pardon?
Those were all videoed.
They were.
They're on the web.
Pardon?
They are on the web.
So, those who threw out their notes could watch the videos, I'm myself, I mean, I'm sorry you threw out your notes, but there is alternative, but there were, apart from the man that we appointed to a different board, because we thought he was, was good, there was one person who got, well, remember, we each picked a first place, a second place, et cetera, right? So there were, there was one person who got second place from two people, and one person who got second place from one person, who, who were not, in fact, two who got one vote as number one, who were not appointed to the planning commission. We might consider just asking those people then to help refresh, or again, you can go and look at the videos, but I thought, thought there was some pretty strong support for, for some of the people we already interviewed, that was, that was the commission that got the most applicants, if I remember. I mean, just about every other person wanted to be on the planning commission.
That's normally the case.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion that we open up applications for a period of two weeks for the planning commission, and then hold interviews with those applicants, and make it, and then determine a alternate from that selection.
There's a second? I'll second that.
And that's open to the public.
Do you think two weeks is long enough? It's, sorry, it's been moved and seconded to open applications for the planning commission for a two-week period of time, then hold interviews and appoint the alternate. Discussion, do you think two weeks is long enough?
Well, I said two weeks, hoping we could get it not only in the local newspaper, but on the website, long enough, and, and, you know, if we... How long do we publicize it?
I start publicizing in November for the January...
And actually, it's longer than that, because it's in the Littleton Report and things like this. When's the next Littleton Report come out?
What you're going to run into now is you're in the middle of summer, so you're in vacation season, so that's...
Yeah. I don't think two weeks is going to be an adequate time.
The deadline for the Littleton Report was Monday.
One luck. As in yesterday?
Yes.
We could still get something in now.
I think we could still, I think I could, I think I could talk to Kelly tomorrow and see what we can do, see if we can get something in the Littleton Report.
Yeah, but even, that was the deadline, it won't go out for another month, so that's, that's not the, the key, it would seem to me that two weeks isn't long enough, but maybe one way to enthuse it a bit would be to contact the people who weren't appointed to give them notice if they went to reapply.
I'll make an amendment.
Hang on, before you do that, please. Yes? No?
Yes, I just want to add something, that the Littleton Report doesn't actually come out until the beginning, by the time it goes through printing and all of that, I don't think it comes out until the middle or the end of September.
Well, I was going to ask you, is it September or August?
No, the beginning of September.
This, this one will be out in the first part of, in about, Western Welcome Week.
Oh, before Western Welcome.
Yeah, it's going to be out here the first part, probably the first week in August.
So then we have to get a reason why.
Yeah.
I'm going to vote against it, because I don't think they need somebody right now, and I don't want to open it up, so I'll vote no.
Could I amend my motion?
Please.
Amend my motion from two weeks to four weeks.
Second.
Okay, it's been, been moved to amend the motion from two weeks to four weeks, four weeks, is that enough time to...
I think it's the tie, but it'll be okay.
When's Western Welcome Week?
Starts the 6th of August, it's the first event.
Four weeks, 14th, that would be August, one, two...
Well, it doesn't have to be four weeks from today, what my point is, is that it's a four-week open application period, not starting today.
Okay, then that would be sufficient. All right.
So when is the starting date, then?
That would be, I think, up to Wendy.
You mean the starting date after you appoint?
No, 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 when would be the starting date for, for this four-week time period that's Debbie's motion before us right now?
It could be August 1st.
I would assume it's going to be starting today, if you're going to do it four weeks.
No, it's a four-week period to apply, not four weeks from today, so we have to get the information on the web, we have to get in the report, I think you can.
Well, if, hang on, if, if that's what you mean, and the Littleton Report comes out, say, the 4th of August, that would mean that the application closing period would be the 25th of August, one, two, three, nope, would be the September 1st, which means...
And then we're jammed up with the budget hearings.
We'd be interviewing sometime at the end of September, except we have budget that...
Why the end of September?
Well, because she's going to have to compile the books, it would take us a week to, the books, the, it's only one board. And we're doing budget, when?
8th, 9th.
I think it's the 10th.
7th, 8th.
10th and the 11th is what I want, 10th, 11th, and possibly the 12th, if you need the third night. Well, the 10th and 11th are Thursday and Friday, so...
It was the 5th and 6th.
So give me, give me some other choices, Mayor.
The 5th and the 6th are Saturday and Sunday.
8, 9, 10.
8, 9, 10, those are the dates.
Okay, 8, 9, 10.
Okay, can I ask a question, then? Last year, it strikes me that we appointed somebody sometime during the year to fill something, and we didn't go through all of this to do it, does, does somebody remember? It seemed to me that the word just kind of, it was somebody, was it Ellie? Ellie Cox on the, on the...
On the historic Pennsylvania?
Yeah, wasn't she appointed after the, the others?
Yeah, I think she was. I don't remember when.
So that was kind of a word of mouth?
Well, if, going back to the schedule, if we do the budget the 8th, 9th, and 10th, then the 15th is a regular meeting, which means the next study session would be the 22nd, which would be when we'd be conducting the interviews. So in theory, we could interview and pick on the same night, but we're looking at the 22nd, September, October, November, December.
Well, or, if, today is the 14th, if we start the four weeks on July 21st, the pay, you know, we have stuff on the web with it, the news, the report gets out the first week of August.
Which is, the 4th is the, is the first Tuesday in August, so...
Okay, so then there's two more weeks left on that, so there's, that would be four weeks would take us through the 11th, right?
Well, you're, you're still, you're still stuck, because the, with September, with the, you've got a regular meeting on the 1st, and then the next week you have the, the budget. I seconded the motion, but I think I'm going to end up voting against it, because I don't think it's doable. No, I didn't.
Peggy, Peggy seconded the motion in the four weeks.
Or the four weeks, I did the second on the first one.
The 18th is a regular meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And the 25th is a study session, why can't we do it on the 25th of August? If the four weeks start, July 21st, and goes through...
I think the 25th is a, is a neighborhood forum, I'll have to go look. And, and, I mean, the real notification here is probably going to be in the Littleton Report, so it really depends on when the report comes out.
But we don't have to do it on a council night, we didn't do them on that last time, we can do it on a, any night we want to, I mean, if we have 10 people. I hate to solve a problem here, but...
Any further discussion of the motion to change the two weeks to four weeks? Counsel ready to vote? The motion is to amend the main motion to open applications.
The vote is two in favor with Councilwoman Cole, Councilman Taylor, Councilman Clark, and Councilman Trheal voting no, the motion's defeated.
Which takes us back to the main motion, which is to open applications for a two-week period of time and hold interviews, discussion on that.
So the question is, when is the two-week period, right? I mean, I think we should clarify that piece.
If you think this is going to pass, then that would be the discussion, is when is the two-week period? I don't think it's going to pass.
Well, it might, I'm, I'm just saying...
Okay, when's the two-week period?
Excuse me?
When do you suggest the two-week period is?
So...
Because we're in the 14th, that would mean that... I don't know how you get notification out in two weeks.
Twitter?
Twitter?
I'm just trying to get with it.
What did you say, Jim?
Twitter. I'm hip, you know, BIA's not the only technologically savvy people in this organization.
Way to go.
Yeah, so what department knows what to do with the rest of us, our clueless?
Well, I'm still saying that last year, we, we apparently did something a little bit different, we didn't apparently think we had to publish it in 42 different venues, so I think that we can get the word out through our various networks and on the web and whatever.
I'm, my personal feeling is, is that ends up not looking so good.
I'm going to vote against this motion, the reason for it is, on the planning commission, we have Gary Flanders that had applied for that job, and he's wanting the job so bad, he's also over here at Victim Assistance Board, and he's, still hasn't got a job, let's give it to him.
You can make that motion as soon as we get done with this. Any further discussion on the opening the applications for two weeks and holding interviews? Counsel ready to vote?
Vote is one in favor, five against, with Councilman Brickman voting yes, the motion is, fails.
Okay.
Yeah, you...
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
That we select Gary Flanders, he's on waiting list on two, the Victim Assistance Compensation Board, and also the planning commission, and seems to me he wants the job.
Okay, the motion is to appoint Gary Flanders to the planning commission, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to appoint Gary Flanders to the planning commission, discussion.
I would point out, for honesty's sake, that that was Jose's first choice, in case he didn't remember that, so, when we, when we appointed before, so we had something to go for him. Are you ready?
Voting? Voting.
What are you waiting for?
Yes, unless somebody wants to discuss some more.
The vote is two in favor with Councilman Taylor, Councilman Mulley, Councilman Clark, and Councilwoman Brinkton voting no, the motion's defeated.
Okay. I believe we have...
You want me to have one more motion? That we don't appoint anybody until the next go-round?
Second.
What kind of message does that send to...
Hang on, it's been moved and seconded.
Jose.
Jose. And, okay, it's been moved and seconded to not appoint anybody for the planning commission until the next round.
What kind of message does that send to what I believe is probably one of our more crucial commissions in terms of quasi judicial for certain, when you have the chairman asking, coming directly to the mayor and asking him to please appoint an alternate, you also have the staff liaison reporting back that, yes, they've heard from other commission members that they'd like this to be done, I think that, you know, we walk on eggs when somebody's missed six meetings, and we don't want to let them, you know, not say anything to them, but we've got a situation where Commissioner has asked us to do this, and I think we have a way of handling it, we have, it's viable for, a viable means for us to be able to put somebody in there, it may take a month, but it's incumbent, I think, upon us to be able to give these people the support and the help and the assistance they need, particularly when they ask for it, for us to do nothing in this situation is, I think, the most inappropriate move we can make.
I totally agree with Debbie, we have in the past asked the chair of boards, of a board and commission, when they had a vacancy, if they wanted us to fill that position or to wait, to say no when somebody comes to us and requests it before we even get to ask them, seems to me to go against the, the procedure that we've, we've established already, an informal procedure, and this is a critical one with a, with a steep learning curve, going through a really important process to try to update the, the com-plan, as well as deal with ongoing issues that they address.
I have a little simpler objection, and that is, if the planning commission got hit by a truck, and they didn't have enough to make a quorum, we'd be forced to appoint somebody anyway, so this motion would basically preclude that, it's, I'm going to vote no against it because of that.
And in reality, I intended that motion to mean for all appointments, for all committees.
Which would have even more objections, in case the other committees got hit by a truck. All right, counsel ready to vote?
Pres standing.
The, the motion is, is that, apparently I misunderstood, the motion is that we not appoint anybody for any of the committees until the next go-around, which would be January.
The vote is three in favor and three against, the motion on a tie vote fails.
Fails.
I'll try somebody else off the list.
Pardon?
Can I nominate someone else off the list?
You can try.
Okay, I would nominate Chris Gifford to fill the vacancy, and I'll speak to that if there's a second.
It's been moved and, appoint Chris Gifford as the alternate to the planning commission, is there a second? It dies for lack of a second.
I make a motion that we send a letter to those remaining mem, citizens who have applied for planning commission, and let them know there is an opening, and we'll be conducting interviews at date set, within, I would say, the next couple of weeks, as soon as Wendy can get a letter out and get it mailed, and get comments and information back from them, have, have them perhaps write a letter, or some sort of short informational piece to us that they are indeed still interested, and what their qualifications are, and that they would be available to come in for a brief interview with counsel again, and that that would all take place within the next four weeks. Would you name it?
Could you shorten that a little bit?
I make a motion that Wendy sends a letter to those applicants who, on planning commission, who are not selected, inviting them to send a letter that they intend, that they would like to be on the commission, and that we will interview those applicants within, and, within the next four weeks.
Okay, it's been moved to...
Just second it.
It's been moved to send a letter to the remaining planning commission applicants, asking them to send in the letter, which the council would then use to make appointments in the near future. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay.
And of question clarification, will they have to reapply, or do we still have their applications?
I'd, before we go further down the path, I think I'd like to get back and talk to Dave, you know, some more about the alternates and the openings that we have there, and I know Dennis' relay comments back from individual planning commission members, but we are at a period of time, because of our schedule, that with the summer vacation and the budget coming up, that it's going to be difficult to get people in here to, been six months since the, since we solicited applications, I'd like to go back and talk to Dave before, before we tackle this again, that would be my preference, so I'm going to vote no against this motion for that reason. Further discussion? Further discussion? The motion is to send a letter out to the remaining applicants that indicated Planning Commission is first choice, so that they can send a letter in that we would then use for a selection process. Counselor ready to vote?
The vote is two in favor with Councilman Taylor, Councilman Mulvey, Councilman Clark, and Councilman Trujillo voting no, the motion is defeated.
Okay. That brings us to the next topic, which is BAC's job. BAC has currently a charge, I believe, that they're operating on. Are they?
Chris, why don't you come down, so we can get you on the mic, and we can talk about what it says in the code is, and also what council direction was given.
To speak historically, there are two things that have given BAC direction. One is, the code requires them to advise my department. They have also, for twenty-some years, operated under a council charge that was given to them, I think, in eighty-eight, eighty-nine, somewhere in there, to make an annual report back to the council. So, that's what they've done over the past two decades. The question came up as to whether they should still be making a report to the council, which is a council charge, it's not written up anywhere, and obviously, any council can change that charge. If you don't want them to advise the department, that's in the code, and so you'd have to make the legal changes in the code.
Well, I think what drove this discussion was the... All I was going to say was the possibility of appointing a BAC member tonight, but that's not, as I thought about it, that's not exactly the reason that was driving this.
This was something that John brought up.
It is something that John brought up, and I'm, that's why I'm a little uneasy discussing it with John not being here. And the reason why we scheduled this for tonight was because we thought we were, because we thought we were going to be appointing somebody for BAC tonight, at the same time that we were discussing appointing somebody for the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
So...
That's why you added it.
Since this is a concern of John's, in addition to a number of other people, my preference would be to postpone this to a meeting that John would be at, to have the discussion.
Makes sense. I think John's made his stance clear. He continues to quote the code concerning this.
True.
I mean, we've been pushing this off for months, and we've got a committee sitting there going, I mean, we've got some marching orders right now, but I think, you know, we put it on the schedule, we talk about it long enough, and then we move it off the schedule, and move it to another date. I mean, we need to come to some kind of closure on this. We've been talking about this for quite some time, so I appreciate and respect John not being here, and him wanting to be part of that conversation, but...
Okay. Well, I think part of... Jim?
I guess I need to ask Chris. Seems as if, in the past, we've had appointments to the BAC committee that are kind of in categories, so that the advice that they're giving to the department is very widespread, and comes from a various number of viewpoints. And those appointments have come from small businesses, large businesses, self-owners, large corporations, have been kind of all over the board in the past. And we've relied, in the past, a great deal on recommendations that would come from your department, that would say, "We are lacking expertise in this general area." And sometimes there are suggestions as to who in the community, or what business in the community, might fill those slots. Am I correct in what I've said so far?
Yes, primarily, historically, that's been the case.
So, I feel the same way about trying to appoint to BAC tonight. And I'll probably get myself in trouble with this, but when you look at the occupations of the people who were not appointed, they are duplicating occupations we already have on BAC. Think a better stop.
Well, Tom, go ahead.
Well, I agree with Jim, and I always liked it when Chris picked the names of the people, because he knows what we need, and the last time we had four women in marketing picked, and they're still on there, except for Pam, I think, so there's still three in marketing. We needed more variety, and Chris is the only one who seemed to know what that variety is, where we had realtors, and we had car dealers, and that sort of thing, but we had a good mix. I still like the fact that we picked them, but, or that we originally got down and decided who, but Chris picked out the people, and I'd still like it that way. What were you going to say?
Well, I was going to be blunt, which will probably get me in trouble, but, you know, my personal philosophy is, is I don't care if somebody agrees or disagrees with me politically, when it comes to appointments to the board. My concern is whether they're going to do a good job or not. But along with that, it's my expectations that people keep their personal politics out of board activities, email lists for boards, and actions that happen with the boards. And when that doesn't take place, then we end up running into an issue. And some of the alternatives that we have is getting rid of the people that behave that way, or changing the direction of the board. And BAC is one of the boards that has that problem, to be quite frank. And we have some members of the board that circulate emails among other BAC members, specifically targeting people on council, related to things that have nothing to do with BAC. So, my problem with BAC is, I don't want to have a committee that's producing an annual report that then gets turned around and quoted in the newspaper to achieve the political aims of a subset of people that are on BAC. So, the alternatives are to not have an annual report, so that it doesn't get used that way, or for council to have more activity, more involvement in who's picked on BAC, and/or council to have more direction on what BAC does. And it's actually the last two actions that we've been doing for the recent past. So, I don't much care whether we go back to the previous way, where BAC was a committee that was, whose basic job was to advise Chris on what the city's business and industry affairs needs to do to further, and further help existing businesses thrive in Littleton. Or, if, the other alternative than that is that BAC is a wide-ranging committee that picks what their own topics are, that range from what the housing type should be in Littleton to all sorts of other issues. If it's going to be the first, then I'm okay with Chris coming up with names from different types of industries, and submitting those names to council, and council picking from the names. If it's going to be the second, if BAC is going to basically pick whatever topics that they want to, that then becomes a hotbed of political issue, then I'm going to continue to want to appoint people on BAC, because I'm going to want to make sure that we get a wide representation of viewpoints across the city. So, I don't much care one way or the other. And in my discussions with John, I don't think he much cares one way or the other either. But that's how I view the problem.
I, can I...
Sure.
Chris, what level of support and, I guess, support, do you, as your, does your department feel like you reap from BAC? I mean, how crucial is BAC to your department and the work you do?
Historically, they've reported to the council, so they've reported and understand that BAC, over twenty-some years that I've been here, has had a lot of people reporting to a lot of different councils, about a lot of different things, so it's not a uniform kind of thing. As a matter of fact, the way the committee got filled varied all over the place. Sometimes I've had mayors that came to me and asked for names. I've had councils come to BAC and ask BAC to give a list to choose from. Some years, it was just black box operations, somebody showed up at the next meeting, and we had no idea how they got there. So, one of the things that's not uniform, is what I'm trying to say. They have historically made recommendations on policy stuff, not so much to my department, but policy things to the city. And I can think of everything from Lucet Boulevard, to various capital projects, to, I'd have to go back on all these reports, the shopping centers came up, and, you know, those kinds of things. They have not given our department a lot of advice, other than, we pick up kind of what's going on in the business community, just by being able to talk to them. But they have not made specific recommendations to us. They've made policy and budget recommendations. That's historically how they've operated.
Because it's, you know, I, I know that you have a number of groups of business leaders that you meet with on a regular basis, and that you've, you and the city have created those support groups, if I'll use a better word, to help you with keeping your dealers out there, within the business and industry world. And I think that, that, those groups probably provide you a great deal more support than what the existing BAC does. I know that we've had discussions in BAC about how much of those reports council really applies, how many of those recommendations ever really get implemented, and it's a very low number. Quite honestly, I would like to see BAC, I mean, I wonder at some point, you know, what really is BAC's function? What are we doing with these people's time? We load them up last week, and put them in buses and take them, or last month, and I know that I heard some positive comments back from that, and people enjoy that. This week, we're going to have a roundtable, but are these really, are these functions that, I mean, we've got a budget, that we do spend some money on that group, and it's a lot of your time that goes into that? And I just wonder, you know, we don't have, it's, I just don't know that it's a group that is needed, it's something that is a key need in the city. I mean, I'm not, I mean, I don't want to be the one that says, you know, shoot BAC, but, you know, but, but I think that we have to look at it realistically, and we have to look at what it is that we, why do we have this committee? What are we getting out of this committee? What are we giving back to this committee? You know, what's happening? And it's, we're not following these policies here, and if the department that BAC is, was created to intend to serve, that's kind of morphed into something else, we may need to, you know, reevaluate it.
Well, it sounds like, from what you've described, that BAC has traditionally been a committee that addresses policy issues, rather than being a strictly advisory committee to your department. And if that's the case, then I think it's important that a council appoint the members to BAC, and that council give direction to BAC on what policies they want them to go off and examine, and come back with recommendations, which is basically the path that we've been going down.
I have a question. You might have said it, and I might have missed it, because so much is going on, but is there something they could be doing that would be more helpful to you? I mean, to your department?
There's several roles they can play. Obviously, hearing from the business community, we need that in all forms. We have lots of other ways that we hear, as Debbie said, because we have other committees, and we're, we're in contact with businesses all day long, that's what we do. They can play a role of being ambassador for the city, and that is more of an outreach, to where they represent the city, and they go to these various, and that's kind of the direction they started last week, but, I mean, last month there. But Debbie's right, they're, they're a little bit of a wash right now, not having clear direction about what it is that they're supposed to be doing. And I think, you know, it's, it's your committee, it's, you know, do you want anything to do with the business community? Do you want to hear from them? Do you, do you care? It's really council's committee, as are all your committees, they're, they're established by you to accomplish your ends for the city.
Well, let me just interject in that a little bit, because, and I was here, and I've shared this history with Chris, but I, I think that, I'll distinguish a little bit between that. You know, your other, your other boards and commissions, for the most part, particularly are quasi-judicial, have some specific functions in terms of, like the Planning Commission, I mean, they're tied, you know, they're tied to some specific ordinances, legal processes, the liquor authority. I mean, they have a specific, definite niche and function under the code. I think, over the years, and I think, just listening to the discussion here, is, BAC probably more than any other, has, I think, been tied more in terms of a policy, a kind of a case-by-case, ad hoc basis tied to the council. And I think, what, if you remember, Chris's first comments were, what's in the code, and how BAC has actually functioned, have been two different things. The code, when it was written, says, well, it was going to be this advisory group. I think more is, you know, the sounding board, kind of the feedback, the ambassador sounding board. But it, what, what it morphed into, for a variety of reasons, was this really sort of policy extension of council, as Chris said, the different council members with different politics, different interests, is, you know, they change over the years. But it's been this annual charge, where the council has said, "We want you to go look at, you know, shopping centers, obsolete shopping centers, we want you..." Quite frankly, because it was either a very active, it was an active political issue. And so, I think that that's something council needs to kind of think about, is, given that, I think the sounding board, you know, Chris has lots of other ways, as Debbie said, lots of other outreaches, people that we, he meets with on, you know, the forums, all kinds of forums, for what I'll call the sounding board thing. And it's really been the twenty years of this annual charge, where council has really turned to BAC. And quite frankly, you know, has, I think it has been more in a political context than a real, what I'll call, program-driven context. And that's just kind of the way it happened. And so, here we are, that, I think it's this council, and Debbie's raised, I think, some important questions, as to, given the fact that over, again, during that time, council implemented a more aggressive outreach program. Each year now, you do a breakfast meeting with the downtown merchants, you do a breakfast meeting with large businesses, you know, you, you set up on an ad hoc breakfast with the car dealers. And so, given that format, is the purported purpose of BAC really still pertinent?
That was the thing I was about to ask somebody. Do we really need, at this time?
Well, I, I think, given, given the twenty-year history, and the way it's, in practice, I don't think it ever, I mean, I'm not downgrading the feedback, but in practice, I think it's been much more in a political context than what I would say a programmatic context. I really think Debbie has put her finger on it, it's really important. Does it still serve a, the function that the council wants it to serve? Does it still serve a, the function that the council wants it to serve?
And if I can, the code states, "The Business and Industry Affairs Advisory Committee shall serve in an advisory capacity to the Business and Industry Affairs Department. It shall foster retention and economic health of existing businesses and industry, identify and promote potential areas for future economic development and redevelopment, monitor public issues that impact economic development, and suggest a course of action for the city. Assist the City Council, Planning Commission, and staff to maintain an appropriate long-term balance between quantity of commercial and residential development and the quality of such development." I guess I read that and I say, Chris, what in there is important, do you need? I mean, what in that, that is, that is their service to you?
Well, before you answer, before you answer that question, you know, when you're reading that, I'm thinking back to the history, and correct me if I get this wrong, but in the eighties, the city annexed the South Industrial Neighborhood, which is south of the Highland Canal, basically to Caroline Road, and they annexed that with the idea that there was going to be a jobs providing annexation to the city. And then what happened was, the buildings didn't get built, the land was vacant, developers came in and said, you know, this isn't developing as business, let's turn this into residential. And we got South Bridge and all of the housing developments that are around there, and the council, Jim, were you on during that period of time?
I was on till eighty-five.
And then the council came to the realization that the area that they annexed for a light industrial park is, was becoming residential. And I think that that particular charge, the mix between residential and commercial comes out of that specific era. Am I getting that wrong?
It was nineteen eighty-nine, that, that piece.
I, the, the area, I believe, was annexed before I got on council, and the master plan was created for that area. And, and frankly, I don't remember when the South Bridge was approved to come along.
Probably in the, in the mid to late seventies, early eighties. And I don't recall, and, and I didn't recall that particular item, and I'd have to go back and look at the minutes, but, you know, I mean, if you look at the context of the eighties, there was the kind of the whole growth, no growth, what's the balanced growth? I mean, it was being discussed all over the state, the incentives issue was a big deal. You know, we were talking about all those kinds of things. And I think at that time, there was, you know, the, the council was looking at that whether to issue bonds for projects, you know, doing those kinds of things. So, it was, there was just, I think, a lot more kind of specific, either, either political or policy topics on the table, rather than the kinds of things that it's morphed into with the gardening program has been much more, once the, once the policy decision was made to, on the gardening program, it really drove, I think, the BIA is now, you know, is more of a toolkit, a more of a technique and, and support organization than the policy political questions. I mean, certainly, they, they got, the charges, for example, looking at the obsolete shopping centers, where they did a lot of fieldwork, interviewed developers and those kinds of things. But I think from the, really, eighty, eighty percent of the program now is much more focused on emerging trends, research, specific tools, like, you know, all the workshops that Chris and his team puts on. So, in, in some ways, I don't think there's that, quite that political policy context that was really front burner, perhaps during the eighties and into the, into at least the mid, mid nineties.
And didn't the master plan for all of that area that was annexed in, in there, when it was, when it was put together, was put together with South Bridge being one type of development and South Park being another type of development, from the very get-go? So, it was always planned to be that way?
I, I'm, that's a little fuzzy for me, Jim. I, I tend to think that's right, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, because, you know, going, weaving back to when the Gates plant was down there, and they were talking about, as Doug was talking about, it was going to be, there was going to be a rail spur, and it was going to be this industrial park, and, you know, then, uh...
Michelin, Michelin.
Michelin before that. So, I think, you know, obviously, a lot of things changed and happened in the community over the twenty years, and I think you're sitting here in twenty oh nine and saying, is there still a specific function for, for BIAC, particularly from a council point of view, from the, from what I'll say is the policy political side? I'm not sure it still has a function in terms of the, of the operational side for Chris and the department, because I think right now, you know, with, as Chris said, now with emails and websites and webinars and all of that kind of stuff, you know, receiving feedback, it's not like we, you know, had to invite people, and you can still do that. But from an operational side, I'm not see, I'm not sure I see a compelling reason for BIAC. I think it's more your question of whether you think it, there's a continued function from a policy political side.
I was just going to say, Joe and I were elected at the same time. His memory might be better than mine, and Jim's, about what that area was going to be like on South Bridge.
There's quite a few builders out in that area then that we were doing all of the plating for. Anything, well, there was South Park, there was the business area over, off of the other side of Fremont. There's quite a few different things going on at the same time. But it was supposed to be a lot more business than it was, and it just didn't come in like they had thought. So then it just started mixing up, and that's what we got. And I think everything out there fell into line pretty good.
Well, another observation, since I read all those reports a year and a half ago, every one of those reports, and several of them, in the year following a given report, observed that what was recommended the previous year, there wasn't any action on or whatever. So, I mean, there were, there were quite a few where, where the group recommended something, nothing is followed up. I mean, if, if people are spinning their wheels doing that, that doesn't seem to me to be fair to them. But then maybe, I mean, there are reasons why stuff didn't get followed up by previous councils. So, yours were to say, and, not that you don't like them, but it's not serving a big purpose for you. The other one is helping planning commission, so maybe we need to be asking, is, is BIAC, do they feel that BIAC's serving a need for them? And, and we need to see that here. But it seems to me, not only have we taken the economic gardening approach, was, is a different philosophy, I think, than here. We also are having council outreach breakfasts with large employers, with the, the auto dealers, maybe we need, and the downtown merchants and whatever. And so we're getting a piece that probably didn't exist when this was put together. Whether we need another piece to help council and planning commission, whatever, I don't know. But I'm, as much as I, I value the people that are appointed, I'm, I'm not myself seeing this. And...
There's kind of, in business and industry, I mean, things phase in and phase out. You say Twitter today, in a year, people will be like, you're not still doing that. You know, things just, and they seem to be moving so much faster and faster and faster. And, you know, this is, this is a dinosaur. And I just got it. But, but, and, and I think sometimes what happens too is that we may just do it because we've always done it, and not look at things as if maybe we don't always have to do it. Maybe there's either a different way to do that, or we just don't need that anymore. And I think that's okay, because things are constantly changing. You guys are talking about South Park, and how many years ago was that? And now look at, you know, and then the different things that are going on, and we don't know what, twenty years from now. So, I think doing it because we've always done it isn't, isn't a good reason, and it's probably, I have to tell you, I mean, it has just been in quite the struggle with the committee on working with the aging report that we had them do. It was, it was a year-long struggle, and it really started to feel a lot like...
You want to make a motion?
Oh. I move that we dissolve Business and Industry Affairs Advisory Committee effective the end of this current calendar, or, in March of two thousand ten would be the final.
With this appointment cycle, the determination of this, end of this term. It's been moved to dissolve BIAC by March of two thousand ten, as our second. I'll second that, so we can get a decision made.
And on discussion on that, I don't think that by, I mean, maybe an additional verbiage in that is in its current form.
Well, I think that, given the discussion from Jim and Chris, and issues versus policy, and the fact that we have a economic gardening policy, I think it may be better to do exactly what you said, and that is, come up with some specific actions to reach out to some different types of businesses, because that was part of the confusion of who should we appoint to BIAC. And I think there was a confusion between the appointees to BIAC being representatives or ambassadors to the different types of businesses, and that was part of the discussion in the past, that we need to get somebody from Aspen Grove and somebody from Quest. Yes, Jim?
I, I will discuss this before I make a motion, but I would be interested in postponing this vote from tonight to some date in the future, so that we can give Jim and Chris, particularly, the opportunity to go back and look at, is this a wise move to do? They would come back with a recommendation. Is, is it need to be restructured into a different format? Does it need to move to an economic, I'm missing the term there, but, development, economic development-type committee to look at infill? You know, does it need to look at that way? But give them an opportunity to analyze this motion before we actually take a formal vote on it.
Comment on that?
Sure.
I heard tonight from both Jim and Chris that, I did not hear great opposition to that, and I want both of them to weigh in on that. And one of the problems I have with what you're saying, Jim, is that to, to do more analysis and more study and more, I think we can get a pretty good gut. I think that these guys have been in the middle of it, I, you know, and, and so, I think, I feel comfortable with what they tell me tonight. If they say, no, we aren't comfortable telling you tonight, and we want to go back and do some more study on it, then I would trust that too. But I don't, I would suggest that it would be a much cleaner operation to, to end this, that, and then if something else were to develop, if there was a need that Chris's department had or a need that we determined, then we could create that new entity. But to, I think, I think a cleaner cut is, is a better way to go, because otherwise it's just going to get morphed and twisted into who knows what. How we can do that.
And maybe the other alternative is to do it through ad hoc committees.
I think that's...
Charged just for a specific topic.
My, my fear with the direction you're going down is we're just throwing the ball over the wall to staff to, because we don't want to make a decision. What I thought I heard was that BIAC is the council's committee, that the council appointed it, that Chris has not used BIAC as a, an advisory role to interface between the, the community, that he has other ways of doing that with the business community. It really comes down to our decision. It's our committee, and I didn't come here tonight with this idea in mind, but I'm, I'm to the point now where I think probably the thing to do is to dissolve BIAC and to address specific business needs as they come up on, as you said, ad hoc basis, or what the specific basis is. Because if we're struggling to come up with a charge for BIAC, and they're struggling to come up with a charge for themselves, then that sort of says that we don't really have a task for them to do. And, and to keep doing this just because we're afraid to stop it when there isn't a real reason to do it, really is us not making a decision, so. Tom?
No, I agree with what Jim said here though, about, let's hold off for a while and look at what they've done in the past, and have John Ostermiller in on the meeting. And I, I thought BIAC did a lot of good over the years, and I've got the reports that the late Bruce Wolf used to give us at the end of the year, and what they did, and they, I thought they did a great job. And I just don't like kicking them out without looking at what they've done in the past. Maybe they can, said he can go through and give us some of that information, or I'll give it to them, because I've got it. And let's wait for John Ostermiller.
Further discussion? The motion is to dissolve BIAC at the end of this session, which is approximately March two thousand ten. Counsel ready to vote?
No, I'd, I'd like to amend that. I would like us at least to have the committee make a statement about this. I'd like to postpone this till we solicit information from them and from the planning commission, because the planning commission is mentioned in the ordinance. So, I would, I would like, and we didn't announce this as a, an agenda item, so the public, businesses, nobody has had a chance to comment to us on something that they might see as critical. So, I would move that we postpone this to our next study session. Well, that's not, is that going to give them a chance to talk to? That would give them a chance to talk to us, at least informally.
Well, let me make a suggestion, just conferred with Suzanne here. I think that to, to do this would probably require an ordinance, because you would delete it from the code. What you could do is say that you are considering this, and, and however you want to amend the motion, and then if, either refer it to BIAC for comment, or ask Suzanne to bring an ordinance forward, and then you could either get impact, I'm sorry, input from BIAC, or you could see if other people show up and say, no, you know, we think this still has a function, and here's some things we could do. And then you could fully vet it. Obviously, we've had a verbal discussion about all the other venues you already have, where over the years, we've layered in the, the breakfast meetings with the downtown merchants, and the breakfast meetings now with the large businesses. So, I certainly think staff could put together kind of a full vetting, you know, here's, Tom had different opinions about the efficacy of the BIAC reports over the years, you know, Debbie, I mean, Peggy, you've raised comments, and I know there's been BIAC comments about how nothing ever really got implemented. So, if you wanted to just say, here is council's, council is interested in, or is questioning whether BIAC still serves a purpose, we'd like to have count, have staff and, and BIAC commission vet this and bring back... this and bring back a, you know, pro and con. That might be a way, that might approach everything, you're trying to take a look at that.
Suzanne, is my motion out of order?
Well, if you make your motion, essentially, it'll just give us direction to bring back an ordinance that would eliminate it. So, you know, if you did that, we would bring back the ordinance and make it effective upon January 1 of 2010, so...
And it would include what Jim is saying?
I mean, in the council communication, we would probably include that information anyway.
Now, we could bring that back, you know, and you could say you're going to consider it, and then the council communication, you could have input from BIAC, you could have whatever information, I mean, Chris could talk about...
Would it be a public hearing?
Right, because we'd have a first reading and a second.
So then you could have testimony, you could have BIAC members come and say, either, we agree, or here's some other things we think we could do, or here's a better way. You also, Debbie, at the end of your, when you made your motion, you kind of had an afterthought when you said, or be reconfigured, you know, is in the current format, it sounds, I mean, I'm sensing that in the current format, almost nobody's really happy with it, not the BIAC members themselves. Council's not sure they're getting what they want out of it. So, maybe that would come back to you as part of the council communication, if there's an ordinance that says, we need to either streamline it, make it more specific, reconfigure it, or, but just the inertia of continuing to just do what we're doing, and nobody seems to be particularly satisfied with it, you're saying is not an acceptable, the status quo is not really performing, satisfying anybody. So...
Jim?
And I can support that, because it's going to give the planning commission and BIAC members an opportunity to express some views to us, and so...
Now, with the, if we have the ordinance, that doesn't necessarily mean the planning commission will think about it and send us an opinion, or show up and give us an opinion. So would we need to give specific direction or request to the planning commission to give us some perspective on this?
We can just put it on their agenda, as a study session item, or a general business, and ask them to give us a recommendation on the ordinance modifications, just as they would on any land use modification.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you.
So, the motion is to dissolve BIAC at the end of the current appointee session, which is March 2010. That would be manifested as a first reading, that would come back to us on an ordinance to get rid of that, either on the 21st or the 4th of August.
But I think you need to maybe not put any dates in there, Doug, and let staff deal with that, because BIAC doesn't meet but once a month.
I know, it's not in, it's not actually in the motion. I'm just telling everybody when the possible dates are.
I would think you would want time to circulate it, so why don't you just, I mean, it could be that you've just indicated, or given staff direction to prepare such an ordinance to circulate it with, for BIAC and the planning commission for comment.
Okay.
And then we'll put together a calendar in terms, as Suzanne said, getting it on the planning commission's agenda, BIAC's agenda, give them some time, and then, but the direction is to move this forward and get some public feedback, and then bring this, say, in the near future.
I don't want to vote for it, if it says dissolve in it, so...
Well, the dissolve is to bring the ordinance to get rid of it, so...
The way I read it sounded like it was dissolve BIAC by 2010.
Okay, then, I will modify, I move that we modify the motion to be, to direct the staff to bring us an ordinance on first reading that would eliminate Business and Industry Affairs.
Committee.
Committee.
Commission. Advisory.
Advisory, commission. Thank you.
Otherwise, it's Chris's job.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Debbie's seconded it.
Okay, there's, the motion rewords, the amendment to the main motion rewords it to direct the staff to bring us back an ordinance that would basically repeal the ordinance that created Business and Industry Affairs. Discussion on the amendment. Counsel ready to vote?
The vote is five in favor, with Councilman Mulvey voting no, the motion's approved.
All that effort, I still didn't get your vote. You did good. Okay, I talked. All right, we're now to the amended main motion, which is to instruct staff to bring us back a first reading that would eliminate the Business and Industry Affairs Advisory Committee. Counsel ready to vote?
And that is with the understanding they're going to float this past...
Well, it's going to be a public hearing, it'll have, it could be two meetings...
With the direction this was going to the planning commission and BIAC and so forth...
We'll circulate it, yes. We'll circulate it to planning commission and...
So that's understood.
Almost guarantee you that everybody will know about it by tomorrow morning. Counsel ready to vote?
The vote is five in favor, with Councilman Mulvey voting no, the motion's approved.
Okay. Any other business? Or adjourned?